Welcome to the meeting of the Phoenix City Council. I will now call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastore.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Welcome. Mario Barajas is available in council chambers today if anyone needs the service of an interpreter. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinance is number G6688 through 6693, S46441, 46512 through 46549, and resolutions 21817 through 21819.
Wonderful, thank you. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on boards and commissions?
Yes, we have a motion to approve items 2 through 27, except items 7 and 27, and noting that the applicant has requested to continue item 26 to May 6, 2020.
Second. Does that include the boards and commission item, item 1?
Thank you, Councilwoman Stark. Vice Mayor, may we begin with a motion on boards and commissions?
Yes, I would like to make a motion on boards and commissions, item 1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signal aye.
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 Passive unanimously. Congratulations to our new and returning boards and commissions members. And next, we will turn to the vice mayor's excellent motion on liquor application.
That's right. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve items 2 through 27, except items 7 and 27, and noting that the applicant has requested to continue item 26 to May 6, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Item passes unanimously. We next go to item number 7, which is a license in Councilwoman Pastore's district. I will turn to Councilwoman Pastore for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. My motion, I move the council forward this application to the state with no recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion for no recommendation and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Motion for no recommendation passes 8 to 1. We next go to item 27, which is an item in the vice mayor's district. So I will turn to the vice mayor for a motion.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to vote no on this recommendation on the liquor license.
Wonderful, and I think sometimes the licensing folks prefer that we move disapproval based on police department recommendation.
Yeah, so I would like to move to disapproval.
Second.
Wonderful. We have a motion and a second. Any comments on this one?
No.
Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Wonderful, thank you. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolutions, new business planning, and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve, motion to approve items 28 through 94, except the following, items 30, 31, 34, 38, 40, 48, and 59. Item 50 has been withdrawn and excluding these items for public comment, item 38.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Item passes unanimously. We next move, we next move to item 30, which is a settlement claim, Daly versus City of Phoenix. Do we have a motion on item 30? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
You need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 30.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Item passes unanimously. We next move, we next move to item 30, which is a settlement claim, Daly versus City of Phoenix. Do we have a motion on item 30? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
You need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item 30.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
7-2.
We move to item, item 31, settlement of claim Crowley versus City of Phoenix. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve item 31.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Come on, Waring. (laughing). I don't even know what's up.
Sorry.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Item passes 6-3. Next, moving to item 34, to Murray, Montgomery, and O'Donnell for federal representation and consulting services. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Mayor.
Councilman DeCecio.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I normally philosophically always oppose these types of contracts. Now, O'Donnell's always done a good job. I've never disputed that. But this is one of those times that philosophical beliefs come into conflict with common sense. I'm actually going to be supporting a federal contract. I know, it'll come a shock to others. But now, especially in the state of crisis that we're in right now at the federal level, I just can't imagine us not having a team there, whatever that team is. And they've always done a pretty good job. So I'm going to be supporting it, even though I philosophically strongly oppose these types of things. Thank you, Mayor.
DeCecio.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Motion for no recommendation passes 8 to 1. The voters will have a chance to continue their support of the City of Phoenix's home rule on the November 3, 2020 ballot. We next move to item 40, which is our SROG operating charge rate, and I'll ask the city clerk to please read the title.
Item number 40 is for ordinance G6689, an ordinance amending Phoenix City Code Section 28-39A4 pertaining to sewer user billing charges for their subregional operating group, SROG, member cities, and providing for an effective date of July 1, 2020.
Wonderful job. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve item 40.
We have a motion and a second. Any council member comments?
Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Come on, Waring. (laughing). I don't even know what's up.
Sorry.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
No, I am concerned that we do need to tighten our belt right now, and so the length of this contract caused some concern for me. I do think in the short term, we need to do all hands on deck, and I appreciate, I've enjoyed working with this firm and think they do a good job, but I also do think we have to be conservative now. So it's a little uncomfortable for me to be on this side of Councilman DeCecio, but it's strange times.
(laughing) I think we switched gears somewhere in there. I don't know. I'm surprised, okay. I didn't use my vote, but I still would have felt bad. I would have felt bad if I voted against it today, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, it passed by a wide margin. We next move to item 38, which is related to our 2020 expenditure limit task force and recommending a local alternative spending limit home rule, which would go to the voters on the November 2020 ballot. This is something we vote on every few years and gives our city voters the opportunity to have control over their budget and to reflect that we have been America's fastest-growing city, that we've provided services such as our airport, which has grown much, much faster than population limit. So to me, this is a very important one. We have had a group of distinguished citizens who have been advising on us on this and created a task force, and we have the chairwoman of that task force with us. So if we are ready, could we turn to our chairwoman for comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Can everyone hear me and see me? Am I good?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Good, good. My understanding is that Jeff Barton and Amber Williamson were going to be somewhere around to introduce this, but I'm happy to do so if they're not.
Mayor, members of the council, we do have Jeff Barton here who can introduce the item. Mayor, it's your discretion.
Wonderful, that is, Monica is ahead of me on this one. Our deputy city manager, Jeff Barton, will introduce this very important item.
Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon, and it is my pleasure to introduce Monica, who was a very steady chair during our very exhaustive home rule process. So Monica led a team of four individuals through a very exhaustive review of our finances for the next four fiscal years. And with that, I'll turn it over. As you know, this is, this is a procedural item for us. We have to comply with the state constitution. Our, our need to do this is if we did not do this, we'd have to reduce our expenditures back to a 1979, 80 level, adjusted annually for inflation. That would look like about a billion-dollar reduction to the city if we had to, if we did not comply with this home rule provision. So with that, I'll turn it over to Monica for her comments as the chair.
Great, thank you so much, Jeff, and my gratitude goes out to the city manager, Jeff Barton, Amber Williamson, and their team of crack-budget accountant, amazing, incredible number crunchers that made this very, very easy. I, along with Rachel Aha from Cox Communications, Bert Coleman from Coleman, Dom, and Layu, Todd Sanders from the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce, and Kelly Williams from CNA Insurance Companies reviewed all of these materials. Phoenix is not required to, but appoints a citizens task force, such as the one formed this year, to recommend an approach to the expenditure limit. Five citizen members with a strong mix of public sector, private sector, and nonprofit experience were gathered together to review this in four different meetings. All were very comfortable reviewing the city's financing and studying the impact of the state expenditure limit. We held four meetings and devoted time outside of the meetings studying the issue and analyzing the city funds and financial forecasts. The first two meetings really focused on learning about the state spending limit, learning the city's history with the expenditure limit and options selected in the past, studying and asking questions about staff-prepared, about staff-prepared forecasts for city funds, including the general fund. The last two meetings revolved around discussing the available options, the merits of an alternative expenditure limit or home rule, and a permanent base adjustment and recommending an option. All were open to the public, though no one attended. After reviewing the options available, the task force voted unanimously to recommend that a home rule option, which establishes the expenditure limit at the budget, be presented to the city council and the voters. Further, as in the past, we also recommend that the use of the community budget hearings continue as a required element to ensure community input and engagement in the annual budget process. The task force recommends the home rule option due to the flexibility it provides to support local control and Phoenix's longstanding open budget process. Another key pro for the home rule option was the requirement for another review by an independent task force and vote of Phoenix residents in four years. The task force considered the permanent base adjustment and one-time override options, however determined these options would not provide the flexibility the city required to continue existing programs and services or to expand those services in the future based on community input and engagement. The permanent base adjustment was not recommended because it would require significant amount, a significant amount to cover the city's current level of expenditures, and it may be confusing to voters. Additionally, as the report indicates, it's not truly permanent in that the city may eventually exceed the limit requiring voter action. Also, unlike the HR or home rule option, this option does not provide for other flexibility. I also wanted to make special note that the permanent base option was attempted in 1985 and 1997. They were not approved, and should we have selected this, if we had selected this option and it did not pass this time, we would be subject, the city would be subject to a $75 million penalty per year, and that $150 million would come out of the general fund, and it would impact basic services like police and fire. Also want to add that the home rule option accommodates new taxes approved by voters since 1979 for programs such as parks, preserves, public safety, and transit. And also, the city simply cannot provide all of the expected level of services under the state, the current state limit. And finally, in summary, the home rule option helps protect important community services at existing levels and provides for future growth. It also accounts for the fact that Phoenix is a leader for the entire region beyond Phoenix residents. And for all of those reasons, we made this recommendation. Thank you so much, and I'll pass it back to Jeff.
Mayor, members of the council, as you can see, Monica earned a PhD-level certificate in, in home rule as well as municipal finance. And with that, that concludes our presentation.
And Mayor, we also just want to express appreciation to Ms. Villa Lobos. As CEO and president of the Arizona Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, she gave her time and her organization gave her time, and as Jeff said, we got an example of her leadership and her diligence. So thank you to Ms. Villa Lobos for her leadership.
My pleasure.
Absolutely. We are lucky to have her leading this task force as well as leading our Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And please give, Madam Chairwoman, please give your committee our thanks as well. Councilmember comments?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Stark.
I just wanted to thank Monica as well. You did an excellent job. Your committee was excellent, and I just want to say, Jeff, you look very dapper today.[1150.48][1150.48](laughing) Thank you, Monica, for everything.
Thank you.
Any additional council member comments? Roll call.
Mayor, we need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve item 38.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
I want to thank Monica and all the members of the committee, yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
8-1.
Motion passes 8 to 1. The voters will have a chance to continue their support of the City of Phoenix's home rule on the November 3, 2020 ballot. We next move to item 40, which is our SROG operating charge rate, and I'll ask the city clerk to please read the title.
Item number 40 is for ordinance G6689, an ordinance amending Phoenix City Code Section 28-39A4 pertaining to sewer user billing charges for their subregional operating group, SROG, member cities, and providing for an effective date of July 1, 2020.
Wonderful job. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve item 40.
We have a motion and a second. Any council member comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Unanimous.
We move on to item 48, an item of importance to the entire city council, which is to enter into a contract with Chrysalis Shelter Services for victims of domestic violence services. This one is especially important in the difficult times we are currently in with people staying at home, and it's a strong reminder to our residents that there are still services available to individuals facing domestic violence and that we would still encourage you to seek help. This also continues an important partnership that the city has had with Chrysalis. It is a five-year contract to provide additional resources to victims of domestic violence in our community. We've heard from our own police department that during this period of physical distancing, they have seen an unfortunate rise in the number of domestic violence calls. The partnership between the city and Chrysalis will give victims of domestic violence a safe and secure place to rebuild their lives and create a new future for themselves. Over the last five years, the city has partnered with Chrysalis to offer these services to 230 adults and 80 children, changing people's lives for the better. It's not just shelter and food that is provided to these victims, it's also advocacy services and trauma counseling, services that are so important as they regain their independence. The goal of this partnership is to provide residents the launching pad they need to start their new lives, and we are very, I am very proud that we can continue providing these important services to our residents. So with that, I will turn to the council for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item 48.
I will second.
This is a partnership that began long before my election, so I want to thank our predecessors for the work they did on this. Councilmember comments?
Mayor.
Councilman DeCecio.
This is one of the most substantive things we're going to do today, period. The rise in domestic violence, it's real. For anyone who doesn't think it's real, it is. Councilwoman Felda Williams and I, this was back in the 90s, wasn't it, Felda? We worked on this together.
I don't use those, yeah.
We put together the original plan, yeah. I think it was like 95, something like that, when we first made the City of Phoenix aware of domestic violence. The individuals that work at these shelters are real angels. They are. They do it for little pay, if any. They volunteer there at times, and they save so many families. If you were just to see the eyes of some of these children, just look at them, it's just painful to think of what they've gone through, and we're just blessed. God has blessed our city with these people that go in there and help. They volunteer, they work, they devote their entire lives to helping others. I cannot tell you how thankful we are to have them in our community, and thank you for everything you do. I'm going to be a yes on this, obviously, but it's something that I just can't even tell you how beautiful these people are that do this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilman. Any additional council member comments?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
I totally agree with Councilwoman DeCecio. I've actually had an opportunity to tour the facility. They are doing wonderful things, they're doing important work, and I will be a yes as well.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Williams.
I, I am absolutely supporting this, and I want to thank them for being our partner and going through all we have gone through them in the past decade and more, and what we're facing today. There are so many people out there that need these services today, because I know domestic violence is on the rise, and so I'm very thankful that they're continuing to work with us and they continue to figure out how to grow so they can help more people. So I'm very supportive.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski.
Wonderful. Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, the Chair of Public Safety, Sal, and others that have worked on this, Felda have created campaigns throughout the years for domestic violence and really created a tool within the City of Phoenix for our own staff, if they are experiencing where they can actually help, and all the different partners that we have out there for the abused shelters that are out there, for homeless mothers also that are abused. So I just really want to thank all those agencies, all the nonprofits, and once again, thanks to the leadership of my colleagues that really pushed this through, and thank you once again for, I hope this passes, for all those that support this.
Mayor.
Wonderful. Councilwoman.
Mayor, I just really appreciate that we're continuing the great work of Felda and Sal, of what they started, and that we continue it, and with all the great leadership that is on the council, that we understand the importance of this. So greatly appreciate it.
Certainly a priority. Thank you, Councilwoman, wise words, and definitely a priority for the entire body of the City of Phoenix. We have a task force moving forward as well to continue to support our community during this difficult time. Orders of protection are still available, so we would encourage anyone who is thinking about it and who needs help to pursue it.
that is on the council, that we understand the importance of this. So greatly appreciate it.
Certainly a priority. Thank you, Councilwoman. Wise words. And definitely a priority for the entire body of the City of Phoenix. And we have a task force moving forward as well to continue to support our community during this difficult time. Orders of protection are still available. So we would encourage anyone who is thinking about it and who needs help to pursue it. Any additional councilmember comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Wonderful. A strong vote of support for Chrisless. Thank you all for supporting that important item. We next move to an additional important item, the approval of the Neighborhood Block Watch Oversight Committee's recommendation for 2020 grant program awards. Public safety is so important to this community and empowering our neighborhoods to find solutions that make sense for whatever the challenges facing them is very important. I understand, Councilwoman Pastor, you will not be participating in this vote?
Correct. There's three items that I have a conflict with. I don't know if we pull them out.
Mayor, Members of the Council, it would be possible to pull those conflict items out and vote on them separately.
Since, Councilwoman, you may know the item is better, perhaps you could make a motion, if it would be okay with the Vice Mayor, for the items in which you feel comfortable participating? Or you could, or... Or, Councilwoman, you could note support for the item and not participate, and we would know that you are generally supportive of Neighborhood Block Watch grants. Is that easier?
Yes, that's much easier.
Oh, Mayor, just a point of clarification. We could get Laura in trouble by doing that. Be better if she didn't say anything. Just a thought.
Okay, then I will turn to the Vice Mayor for a motion.
You're trying to be nice, I know.
So I would like to make a motion to approve item 59.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Waring?
Do you hear me? Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Eight-zero.
Motion passes eight-zero. For our staff, does that complete our agenda business for today?
Yes, Mayor.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Some very important items moving forward today. We will next move to the citizen comment portion of our meeting and begin with Lowell O'Grady. And Lowell will be followed by Abby Miller. Lowell, you have the floor.
Gallego, our district councilman Nowakowski, and members of council. R's, the 60 Home Heritage and Alta Vista community, has a single road connection on Alta Vista Road and is located just a few hundred feet east of the unsignalized and very busy intersection of Alta Vista at South 7th Street. We visited virtually every resident during February before the shutdown, at which time the four-lane 7th Street was carrying heavy traffic, particularly during commuting hours. Alta Vista's eastbound left turn to the north on 7th Street is by far the primary movement for all traffic approaching from our side onto 7th Street. And there is a lot of waiting time for each car that is queued up. And then, when we make the turn, we literally have to thread the needle, if you will, to find enough of a gap in oncoming traffic just to give us enough time to make the left turn out onto the middle paved median lane. Our petition is only asking that our street be treated the same as Vineyard and 7th Street, another intersection quarter mile south, which already has a right turn lane painted on it. So both directions of turning vehicles have their own turning lane to wait in. This is so the vast majority who are turning left will only share the queue lane with the very, very few travelers risking going straight across to the east, crossing the whole street in one movement. Also being asked for is a small section of sidewalk on the south side of Alta Vista from a few hundred feet east of us and over continuing onto 7th Street. This will help all who live in the general vicinity who have to walk to the bus stop on 7th Street, not having to constantly look behind themselves for oncoming traffic. Please realize that the proposed sidewalk would come to an end directly across from where the sidewalk happens to continue, just on the other side, only on the north side, from that point going east and goes past El Reposo Park and the senior center. Remaining on our petition is a badly needed street light on R, the busier side, west side of Alta Vista, 7th Street intersection. This will help us, not only us, but all the residents here who have to find the intersection when traveling along 7th Street in the evening or in the early morning on the way home. And we thank you very much for considering this petition at this meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. We will next, yes.
We'll have my staff, Felicit Mendosa, my assistant, and also the Streets Department look into this. They have that information at hand, and they'll be meeting with the neighborhood pretty soon. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilman Nowakowski, and thank you to your team and our Streets Department. We will next go to Abby Miller, followed by our final speaker for citizen comment, Elizabeth Venable.
Pursuant to Chapter Four, Section 22 of the City of Phoenix's Charter, I hereby petition and request that the Phoenix City Council have Phoenix City Council members publicly disclose the specific amount of money and any and all benefits for them. Their spouse or dependent family members have received from unions and nonprofits since 2016. This information should be placed in an easily accessible location on Phoenix GUP and should be done within 10 days. This information should be updated quarterly. According to the Phoenix City Charter, this must be handled at the next Phoenix City Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. Can I ask you a question?
Noting that we cannot have discussion of substantive, you could ask a technical question? Yes.
I'm asking Chris Meyer if that is reported annually, that information. I think we are required to file it. Yes.
And we could respond in the council packet with a link to that, the annual financial disclosures for members of the council.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, I needed to get a copy of the petition, but yes, it appears the council was correct. At least most of the information is required and is updated, but we can look into adding the other, if there is other information.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will next turn to Elizabeth, our final speaker of today. Elizabeth, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, so I was pleased this morning because I heard that Maricopa County opened up a lot for the campers to, so that they could spread themselves out and not be, and be socially distanced. I thought this was a very creative way to trot into the CDC guideline. I've been upset because I see private entities doing things. I now see our county doing things. I don't see the City of Phoenix doing things. I see the circle of the city out there. I see the human resources campus putting in their own infrastructure, but I don't see the city doing it. And I find it to be frustrating because as the New Times reported, and as I keep telling you, you're still enforcing the camping on public property, and you have no sufficient shelter site to do that. And you keep saying community bridges, community bridges. Community bridges does not meet the legal definition of appropriate shelter under Martin and Boise because it is medical. It has to be appropriate shelter. I am very glad to see Maricopa County try to find a creative solution to socially distant people who are living in a tent. What we really need are things that are affordable, if not hotels, which could be the most optimal. The other options, as written by the CDC, are very reasonable in price. They include porta-potties. They include hand washing stations for senior more individuals. And I think this is, cities should spend less time trying to push people around and intimidating them, and more time trying to find space for them and making sure they don't die from COVID. And so, sorry for the drama, but that's about it.
Thank you, Elizabeth. That concludes our citizen comm, excuse me. Okay. That concludes our citizen comment portion of this meeting. We are adjourned. We send everyone to stay safe.